We got to.
Bill gets in position.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My report is going to be brief because I've been out of town. We just note that we will be going into closed session at the, towards the end of the meeting to, for attorney-client communication regarding threatened litigation. And just to note that we do have an update. Items J has been updated and K added under new business. And another addition is we have a department head report from the chief of police. That is my report. So council member Lebo.
Um, I had a Green Roof Area Center board meeting. That is it.
All right. Council member Hertzler?
Absolutely nothing.
Council member.
We had a lengthy policies and procedures meeting that we're returning to tentatively on the fourth. And we'll report more on that at the next council meeting.
All right. Thank you. Council member Gilmore.
Policies and procedures. Sean's bringing lunch next time. And eat at it.
And eat at it. All right. Thank you. Then we have the police chief here that would like to give a report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to give you guys an update on kind of where things are at with the police department. We are in the process and have ran through the first round interviews with the hiring process. We had 13 applications for the position. One of those came in late and was not considered. We chose to do interviews with all 12. Two of them backed out the day of, so we only ended up interviewing 10 of the 12. Four of those have been put on or passed to be second round interviews, which are slated for tomorrow night with policies and procedures. And then we'll continue with the process based on those interviews tomorrow night. It is looking probable that we will be down another officer here, probably by mid-March. One of the officers is currently in the hiring process and there's a conditional offer within other agency back home. So we may be looking to hire a couple off of, off of that list. Other than that, police department's currently working on some squad car replacements. The K-9 squad is just about done finally, and we're really hoping to get Tom back by May, hopefully. So other than that, your guys' year-end report is probably going to be slightly delayed this year, just so you know.
It's already in the February.
I know. I'm going to try and get it out as soon as I can, but it may be delayed a little bit.
All right. Appreciate that. Any questions for the chief? Neil?
Atwater Ford did deny our proposal?
They did.
Okay.
Yep. There's for the, the third, March 3rd, budget and finance. We've got two quotes from both Yarman and 1040, but they felt they could sell it for $800 more, so. We told them to go ahead.
Okay, all right. And then any other questions for the chief? Okay, then we have our consent agenda before us. And just to note that we have a request from the item B under old business. We'll move that up to get our guest out of here at a relatively decent time. The rest of us will have to stick around. The consent agenda then will include the minutes from those meetings as listed on page one. Vouchers on page two totaling $115,823.39. We have a request for Brad Melhop, Chris Price, Tim Miller, Andrew Nienaber, Dominic Platto, and Shane Jansen to go to Mankato Fire School to approve that. And a request for Lee Schlepper to go to the damage prevention meeting on March 17th. And a request for Bob Wunder to go to the 2020 County Noxious Weed Meeting on April 1st. And then the requests from the police department here for the K-9 supervisor class for Chief Wagner and Officer Fred to attend that. And the police department, the SFST training to approve that for Officer Okinson. The beer licenses as requested on, are applied for on page 11. Or the on-sale for Coronas Lanes and Painesville Baseball Association 3-2 beer license. And then the off-sale for Quick Trip Store 598. Garbage refuse licenses for those three, West Central Sanitation, Tom Kramer, and Advanced Disposal. And that is the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moshe Merinki seconded by Lebo to approve the consent agenda discussion.
One question. Fire department, they have the 1,800 bucks in their training budget, I would presume?
I believe they do, and they also get reimbursed from the state for most of their training.
I'll figure I.
I.
Fosman.
I'm carrying.
All right. Then we have back again Kevin Farne from the Coronas Lake Association who will give us an AIS report. The lake is frozen over, right?
Good, good observation. You're right. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for once again letting me come before you and just give you an update on what's going on regarding the Lake Association and the activities on the lake. So we do appreciate it, as we do appreciate our partnership with you that we've had for many years on the aquatic invasive species. So, and I believe you have in your packet?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Brendan, for getting that in there. So I just wanted to talk about, and I'll, I'll go as quick as here as I can, and you know how that goes, about the two projects that are going on on Lake Coronas. The first project that I'll talk about quickly, that you're only involved indirectly on that, but not financially, and that's the Starry Stoneward project, trying to figure out and determine how we can manage the Starry Stoneward. So that's the first project. The second project has to do with the inspections that we have out at the, at three of the accesses on Coronas. So to talk a little bit about the pilot project. The pilot project briefly was a four-year pilot that we had. We had funds through the Outdoor Heritage Fund, which went to the Initiative Foundation, Little Falls. Little Falls kind of ran the grant. We had a grant through them for a total of $425,000, of which, and I've got some numbers here that we'll go through. That grant is now finished. Our final report was accepted by them. Our financial report was accepted. You know, subject to audit by DNR as anything would be or should be. In that four-year project, we accounted for spending $794,084 towards the project. The grant through the Initiative Foundation, that was a 50-50 grant. You know, at one time, probably the first time I came and talked to you about it, it was like, you know, how are we going to possibly get those funds? You know, what, how is that going to work? So we, we use of the Initiative Foundation, $396,857 is what we actually used. So we did in fact use almost the full grant amount. However, of the match, just to let you know where the rest of that match, because we had to match that. So our match percentages, we were like at, we use, the, the community of Painesville, the Lake Association, matched at 50.02 percent. And so we got about as much out of it as we could, at least as I could make the numbers look good that way anyhow. So, but we, we, we did pretty good in that regard. But of the, the match part, so the other $396,000 came, $40,000 we got from the Stearns County AIS funds. We got $15,000 from Meeker County. We actually had Candy Eye County, which is not directly involved. They contributed out of their AIS funds, $5,000 to, to us. The intent there is, you know, if we could figure out how we can stop it from coming to them, it was worth their $5,000 investment in us, basically is what it amounts to. I tracked and logged over $134,000 in what they refer to as in-kind funds. That's, you know, every time I borrowed Paul Bugby's boat, Karen Langmo's boat, anybody who worked on the project with me, I tracked all of the hours, including my own hours, and that all adds up as in-kind. I had a schedule that I submitted to them upfront of what our hours were going to be worth, and they accepted that. It went through. So I thought that was pretty amazing that we tracked that much. DNR contributed probably in grants over the four years about $10,000. You know, thanks to the Mathiowits family, when they purchased the equipment and stuff that they use on the lake, which sets us up for future work and stuff, that was, I was all able to count that as match dollars as well and use that towards, towards our 50 percent match. And then the remainder of the funds were from KLA, you know, which comes out of our dues and stuff. You know, and in this project, no city funds were used, just, just to let you know. So your funds were used in the other area, the inspection. The project, just to also let you know, involved work from Clemson University, University of Minnesota. If you get a chance, please go to the Coronas Lake Association website, and you'll be able to find in there a presentation that was put together by a young lady by the name of Carly Wagner. Carly was working on her master's thesis on, did all of her work. One of the lakes she worked on was Starry Stoneward on Coronas. We have that in there, so you can see what it is. She has some very interesting information and some really interesting charts that you can see exactly what would help happen to Starry Stoneward if you just let it go and didn't do anything. So please take a look at that. That's, it's, it's a really good presentation that's out there. We had her do it here. But there's another one through the University of Minnesota that she did. She got her master's degree and now works for DNR. So at least we know who she is, and, and she's a great resource for us. And DNR continues to be involved. This next year, we'll have involvement from Mankato State University. I think it's University of Minnesota, Mankato State will be involved. Indiana University is doing a project on Lake Coronas. I was on an hour conference call with them this afternoon. So they'll be doing. So there's still continued work by the academia to try and understand more and more about Starry Stoneward. The results of what we did turned out very positive. We were able to come up with a protocol of management of the Starry Stoneward to get it to the point of it's not a nuisance level for, for people that are not only visiting the lake, but people on the lake as well. So hopefully we'll be able to continue that on. So what's happening next year though, how do we continue that on? Well, we were lucky enough along the way to get an appropriation through Michelle, Senator Michelle Fishbach helped to get a $200,000 appropriation for the Lake Association to work on that, of which I was able to still maintain and hold $128,000. We have a $10,000 grant we'll be getting again from the AIS, Stearns County. We have another $8,500, so out of Meeker County. So we'll have some funds to try to continue our efforts next year. But the year after that was the question. What do we do after that? Because we will be out of money. And so what we have done is we have submitted a petition to the watershed. Under Minnesota Statute 103D, a lake association can submit a petition to the watershed for a special project. And so to do that, you have to go out and achieve, I have to get 25 percent of the signatures. We defined our target group to try to get funds from, basically tax is, was from the shore owners. And so we had an attorney write out a petition. We went out and we got signatures. To move it forward, you only need 25 percent signatures. We actually got 45 percent signatures. And we weren't able to find everybody because people, it's hard to always find people at the lake. After several attempts, you, you, you give up, and we had well exceeded our, well exceeded what our goal was going to be. So we moved that forward. That petition was accepted by the watershed. And it's very prescriptive as to what has to happen next in the law. And so the next step in the law was a engineering company is hired to work on what the, the numbers are, what it would cost to maintain the work that we need to, need to do to manage the Starry Stoneward. That engineering company is in the process of preparing their report. There also is a set of what they call viewers or appraisers, which go out and look to see what the value is. They do a comparison eventually to say, does the end, you know, the cost of running the project, is that within the scope of what the appraisers say it is? You know, it has to be to the benefit of everybody. If it's, if the value isn't there, then you can't do the project. So we're in the process of doing that. Following that, there'll be a public hearing. That'll all be noticed. You'll be, they'll, you'll be in the papers and everything else, so there'll be notices out. And then it goes through the rest of the process where they can be accepting it or not. All hopefully be completed by early October, so that the watershed, if in fact there's a tax that comes out of this, watershed has to be done early October, so they can get it over to the counties, so that it'll hit the tax for next, for 2021. And that's the status of that project. So can I take up, can I ask if you have any questions about that? And then I'll go on to the inspection piece.
I do have a question about the pilot project.
Yes.
Is what's being learned there being applied elsewhere that you know of?
As far as I know, it, it is. What, I get inundated with calls from all over the state. A few calls from outside of the state, because I know that what our information, what we've learned has been shared in Florida and New York and New Jersey. It depends upon where the aquatic invasive meetings are. My presentation, I've given our presentation, the presentation of what we did in New York myself. But I know that Dr. John Rogers, the consultant, has delivered it in Florida and in one of the Carolinas, I think is where one of the meetings was. You know, and the Clemson grad student that, that was working on his PhD has now got his PhD, and that's all data coming from Coronas as well. So the answer is that was one of our goals, was to share it across the nation. And I actually think we did a pretty, let's just say we did, ended up getting it done better than I thought we were going to be able to. You know, because that's, that's really an outreach of how do you, how do you get tied in with the other groups, so, to do it.
Could you just really briefly explain, explain what the management protocol will be ongoing?
So the management protocol, there's two parts to it. One part is to use a mechanical puller, and that's the piece of equipment that the Mathiowits family has, has purchased and is running for us. We pay them to run it. We have an agreement with them. So there's the mechanical puller, and there's the chemical treatment. And so where we can, we try to get in and use mechanical pulling first, just to try to knock, knock the mass, what's called, what we refer to as the mat down, because then it'll make the chemicals that much more effective. If we can't get in and knock the mat down first, then we just go in with the chemicals. And it's all dictated, all of that is dictated by the timing of growth. And, you know, we, we're trying the best we can. You know, I, we go out and audit on a weekly basis to see how it's growing. So last year, we had anticipated, everything was slow last year growing. So we, so we scheduled our, our, our chemical treatment, and we had the mechanical harvester, you know, working as, as best as, as fast as it could. We did have a little leap last year with the loss of Gary Johnson, who was our driver. Gary was just, just a Superman and, and really did a great job for the lake. But anyhow, we tried to, we tried to do, do that, but if the, the growth is too fast, then we have to go in with the chemicals. Because the chemicals, if it's too, if the mat is too thick, the chemicals aren't as effective. Then you have to go over and over and over again. So last year, we anticipated that we would start, you know, everything was slow, so we thought, well, August 1st should be soon enough. Well, it seems like what happened is during the week of the 4th of July, everything grew about a foot and a half. And that was more than we anticipated. If you, I mean, I talked to Bob Pedersen. I had calls from him. He said, I was in the water a week ago, and it was up to my ankles, and it's up to my knee right now. And so those are the kind of things that you just, we're just trying to learn, continue to learn on the Starry Stoneward, what it's doing. So the protocol then is to go in and do two treatments if we can, if we can afford it. But we'll try and do the mechanical pulling always first. So that was a combination that, we know that in Michigan, they had been using chemicals, and they'd been using mechanical pulling or actually cutting. And they had never put the two together to try to use one to help the other. And that was something new that we did, and that's what got us the grant through the Initiative Foundation. We had to have something that was a little bit innovative, and that was, and it, and it worked. So we got a grant to get us a whole lot further than we could have been on our own. Did that get your question?
It does. I'm just kind of wondering, like, how do you define success with something like this?
Well, so we define success, and that's where we use a third-party auditor all the time to come in, and he's the one that's judging success or failure. We're not doing it ourselves. We use a third-party auditor, and we use the density of the, of the mat to tell us whether we're successful or not. DNR likes to use percent frequency of occurrence, and that's not a good measurement in this case, because it doesn't, it doesn't work. Because the chemicals don't kill it 100 percent. So you always, a percent frequency of occurrence is a positive and a negative. It's a yes or a no. It's either present or it's not present. And it doesn't matter how much is present, it still counts as a yes. So you can't use that in a situation where, one, you're not killing it 100 percent. We knew that wasn't going to be possible. And at the same time, areas of the lake, which we can't treat, we don't have enough money, and we can't get a permit to treat the whole lake at once. Even with our variants, the most we could do would be 50 percent of the littoral area, the, the shallow area. So we couldn't do it all at once. So we know that it's spreading in other areas, so percent frequency of occurrence doesn't work. But if you look at the density of the mats and stuff, that's where you see the difference. And we can tell the difference between our, when we look at our reference area versus what is happening in the reference area versus what has happened in our treated area. The reference area is just going crazy. And the natives are going down. The Starry Stoneward is going up. So it's, we can tell that kind of a difference. So, sorry, I didn't get to, mean to get into details, but you asked.
I did. Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The watershed assessments, that would affect every landowner, including homeowners and non-owners?
Yes, and it's, and it's up, it's, it's up to the, we initially defined our, our area as the shore owners and people with deeded access, but the appraisers will go through and determine that. That's, that's kind of in their bag. That's where they start, and that's where they, that's how, that's how they do it, so.
Well, the watershed is huge.
Yeah, but they don't look at the whole watershed, because the whole watershed isn't getting the benefit.
Right.
You know, they only look where the benefit is. Yep. That, that, I think that's what you were asking, right? Yeah. So if there's no benefit, then, you know, then, you know, that's why we kept it up to the shore owners. Okay? Thank you. Okay. The second project on the lake is the inspection program. And again, thank you for your continued support in that. The inspection program, basically, within the watershed, we treat it as a watershed issue. It deals with three accesses on Lake Coronas, Veterans Park, 55 Access, and the county, the regional park. It, the, deals with two accesses on Rice Lake and one access on Grove Lake. So what do we hope to accomplish with the inspection program is, one, is continued education. We want to be sure that we're trying to prevent new infestations and protect other lakes in the state from movement of Starry Stoneward out. So we inspect boats going out and coming in. I did put a chart in there that I won't go over, but you can sure look at that. Just to give you kind of the inspection data for the watershed, I've listed all of the accesses. I've listed the total number of inspections, and that's both in and out. And then the hours of inspection on each location, so you can kind of see what's happened over the years. I went all the way back to 2014, because you've been involved since that long. You go back that far, and actually you even go back one year earlier with helping us also in putting it all together. But that was using an organization called the Water Guards, and they were unofficial inspections. That was kind of the first year that we really got into it. So I didn't put that in because it kind of, it, the data looked funny. This looks like it belongs. I mean, this is, this is correct. And so you can see, and each year you've contributed $4,300. And I understand from a message I got from Ron that this year you have in your budget for this project, $4,500. Thank you for remembering us. Thank you for thinking about this project and how important it is. Just to let you know, what we see, we see that approximately 35 percent of the boats and trailers come in with some kind of plant or mud on them. I mean, of the ones we inspect, we're not there 24 hours. You know, in some cases, we might only be there four hours a day, so. But we're limited by what we can do with, with our budget. We're doing the best that we can to try and get it spread out. One, one to 2 percent of the boats have plugs left in them. I was on a conference call today and found out that what they call our DNR check stations, where DNR will set up at a, at some sort of a, a, a location along the roads, and they'll just pull boats over and check them, and they're finding that their 30 percent are out of compliance. So that's the kind of risk that's, that's out there. And that's what we're trying to prevent. So that's kind of in line with our 35 percent of the boats are coming in with some sort of mud or plants on their trailer. This year, we appreciate the, the increase from you. We did in fact have a little bit of a cost increase, but we're grateful we were able to work with a local organization. Just to let you know that 85 percent of the funds that we contribute towards this inspection program within the watershed all end up locally. The people that are hired are local people, and it works out really well. They, they have a relationship, hopefully friendly in all cases, with the, the local people that are out there and going in and out of the lake. So I think the one thing that I throw out is, is, you know, please don't underestimate the value of both lakes, Rice and Coronas, to the city of Painesville, not only to the watershed, but to the city. And the last page in there, again, I won't go through that, but just to give you an idea of 2018 and 20, 2020, where some of the dollars and stuff are coming from and how that project gets funded. In 2020, we are looking at a budget of $77,000. But you can see from that just exactly how, where the funds and stuff are coming from, so. And if you have any questions on that, other than that, I'm, I'm finished. And again, I thank you for your continued support in this effort. Okay?
All right. Thank you, and thanks to everybody that's involved in this. Okay, then we said we were going to deal with item B under old business on page 138. And my page turner going here. And Ron will give us a verbal report, and now everybody else leaves. I heard Ron was going to speak. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, this is the Solar Land Lease.
Mm-hmm.
And we do have a representative from Viking Solar here with us tonight. The site that we're looking on is, actually is a map on page 153A. I think our biggest.
All her pictures. I love it.
All her, yes. That's a better, yeah. I think the biggest question that the public works had when we were going through this was, do we have any other future use for this here site? And I guess the answer that we came up with was no. Nothing better than putting a solar farm on it. And I guess the reasoning for that, there is a big XL transmission line that runs through there that separates our irrigatable land from the non-irrigatable. And we looked at any other possible use, and we did not come up with any good item that would be better than this here. So there was a recommendation from them to accept this here. That site is 34 acres. The land, obviously, that we would sign here would be 9.92 acres. Obviously, the rental agreement would be for $1,000 per acre plus a 2 percent increase each year beyond that. And I guess what makes it look so good, it is close to the substation, which we are benefited by here in town, and there's three-phase power close by there. There is, I believe, two other sites very close by that are going to be in the neighborhood. So it will actually fit in quite well with the other surroundings out there. The term would be for 25 years with two one-year, two five-year extensions that are optional. with two one-year, two five-year extensions that are optional. Taxes, the city obviously is responsible for any payable taxes on there. However, if there is any increase due to this, the company will pick it up. So. And I guess Bill Spooner had gone through the agreement, and I know they went back and forth. So, Bill, I guess, have you got any concerns about that?
No, I mean, I, I think we did have some concerns. We, we discussed some of them, and they made changes that, you know, that, some of the changes that we'd requested, some of the other things we kind of compromised on, but I think it addressed the concerns that we had. Ron, I think you and I were both satisfied. We, we talked about the changes that, I mean, we were a little worried about it covering more land than the lease in terms of ingress and ingress easements and so forth. But I think all that got addressed in a way that works. And I noticed the version that's in the council packet has got some underlining in it. I think I was sent a clean copy of this, and so I have one.
I'll make sure you have one, too.
Yeah.
I can send one over to you.
But I, I don't have anything else. I mean, I think if, if there's questions, I'd be happy to talk about it. But I think all the issues that we had were addressed and worked through in a way that makes sense.
Are you able to recycle all of these at the end of their lifespan?
Yep, absolutely. There's actually been a boom in solar recyclable businesses, and solar's really taken off. You worked with a couple of them.
Maybe I should have you use the microphone there. And you are Jacob, right?
Jacob, yep. Thank you. It's not that long of a drive. My family has a cabin on Sylvia, so I mean, I was just hanging out there for a little.
Oh, by Anadine?
Yep, exactly. Right outside. So, yeah, not a long trip for me at all.
Okay.
Yes, to answer your question, Recycle Ben is just one of the many companies we use when these projects are decommissioned, or any solar project, whether it be on, like, the roof of a building. The panels are mostly made out of aluminum frames, silicone, and some glass. Everything in it is recyclable. The copper is recyclable, the wiring, all of that. So when they are done and taken down, for the most part, all of it is going to be recycled. Yeah.
So the silicon is possible to be recycled now?
Yeah, it, it varies from manufacturer to manufacturer on the quality of it. We tend to use haling solar panels for projects like this, which are made in Iron Mountain, Minnesota. And they use a, they're a great quality panel. They use really great materials in all of it. So, yeah, for the most part, it gets taken by a recycling company and broken down and filtered and sifted through their process. And what is able to be recycled is, but the majority of the solar panel is recyclable.
Thanks.
Neil, any other comments from the Public Works?
No, I guess we just thought it would make good economic sense to go ahead with compared to the rent we're getting from crop farming to what this will be.
Well, I move to approve the land lease and solar easement between Viking Community Solar 23 LLC and the city of Painesville.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the, oops, wrong way here. Approve the land lease and solar easement between Viking Community Solar 23 LLC and the city of Painesville. Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? All right. Lost my place electronically. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you got that done. Now, back up to the Ron Mergan Show, starting on page 20.
Okay, first item there, Matthew Quaid. He's been with us for five years. Just, he is one outstanding employee, working his way through college. And I guess we would like to see his wages bumped up to step nine at grade one. 75% of that scales what it is. Could be from $1,242 up to $1318 per hour.
They're going rate right now for anybody, part-time, summertime, any kind of labor work, is getting started out at $13 an hour, starting when you walk in the door. So $1318, it needs to be done.
I move to move Matthew Quaid to grade one, step nine, at $1318 per hour.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to move Matthew Quaid to grade one, step nine, $1318 per hour. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? And then item C, part-time Public Works maintenance worker?
Yes, we do have one open position here, and that is for up to 34 weeks, and it is a maximum of 32 hours per week. And that, we would like to start that, obviously, sometime in April, if we can get them hired by then.
Okay.
Move to begin the hiring process for the part-time Public Works maintenance worker position, a union position for 34 weeks, up to 32 hours per week.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to begin the hiring process for the part-time Public Works maintenance worker position, which is a union position for 34 weeks, up to 32 hours per week. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? And summer's coming. Ron?
Yes, the park board reviewed this year, the summer concert in the park. It's been a very successful over the years. And I know it's been going for quite a long time, and it, the park board would like to see it continue. And.
I'll make the motion to allow Painesville Community Ed to use the Veterans Park Shelter Kitchen and outdoor seating at no cost, with the city listed as a concert series sponsor for the summer concert in the park series to be held Thursday evenings from 4 to 9 p.m. June 25th to July 16th, 2020.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to allow the Painesville Community Ed to use Veterans Park Shelter Kitchen and outdoor seating at no cost, as on the action sheet, page 22. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? And then item E, purchase of splash pad amenities?
Yes, we would like to definitely thank the Lions Club for all their generous support here and gift. And that is with the purchase of the splash pad amenity. The park board did look at a number of different items. You got a water blaster that is basically a big squirt gun, moves up and down. And there's a water cannon that moves up and down and right to left. They looked at a little ladybug, a fire hydrant soaker, a flower shower, and then a cactus cooler. Quite a number of items. But they did settle on, they did recommend that we purchase the water cannon in the amount of $4,950, plus the flower shower for $1,490, with a total of the $67,0870. I think that'll be a great amenities to our facility, and along with what we did last year. I guess we would look for a much improved, or a number of people at the facility.
And so everybody knows, a lot of these, we can move around. So we can take one out, put one in, and they're easily moved. So every month, we could change the water park around a little bit to make it new and different.
So will the flower shower go in place of that mushroom umbrella thing, or it'll just go somewhere else?
No, that will go on one or the other. And the mushroom umbrella would stay, as I believe is what we discussed.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve, to purchase the water cannon in the amount of $4,950, plus the flower shower in the amount of $1,490, plus shipping totaling $67,0870 from Rain Deck.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie to purchase the water cannon in the amount of $4,950, plus the flower shower in the amount of $1,490, plus shipping totaling $6,70870 from Rain Deck. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? And balance will be, it was at $7,500. So then they'll just carry that over for the, the next, the next time we look at something. All right. I see the chief is still here, so let's take item F, sale of used SWAT equipment.
Thank you. So I was approached by Avon PD, one of their officers, in regards to our SWAT equipment that we had purchased for Nathan Johnson when he was employed here. They have an officer, their K-9 officer, actually, who is looking to become a member of the Stearns County SWAT team. Just so happens that he is about the exact same size as what Nate was. And they're interested in seeking to obtain our equipment, since we currently have really no use for it. So I wanted to bring it forward to you guys. It is used equipment. It's approximately two years old. For the equipment that he's looking to obtain from us, we did purchase it for around $3,000. Some of the biggest expense was the vest, the tactical vest, as well as the helmet. So I wanted to bring it up to you guys for some discussion to see what, what your thoughts are with it.
Why wouldn't we keep it?
Really don't have any use for it, unless I put somebody back on the SWAT team.
Well, we're hiring two more people. We don't know what size they are.
Correct.
They want to be in the SWAT team. And we already purchased them, and they're not going to go out at eight, correct?
No, the vests actually have a shelf life to them.
What is that?
Five years. It's usually five to six years on the, on the vest. And, and I'll be honest with you, yeah. In our current situation, there isn't anybody I'd be looking to put on the SWAT team. Even the new guys are going to be several years before they would even be eligible to join the SWAT team. The only officer with any longevity here, Officer Fred, has indicated he's not interested in it, nor does he want our K-9 associated with the SWAT team, so.
And what is the equipment?
That they're looking at?
The equipment that they want? I mean, what is it?
So it's going to be the tactical vest, the helmet. There's some knee pads, elbow pads. There's a coat. Let's see, I think some gloves.
What, what kind of value would you put on it? Is it worth $1,000 bucks, or?
I would say it's probably worth $1,000. That's a question, I'll be honest with you, that I've struggled with. You know, the city invested quite a bit to be able to put Nate on the SWAT team at that time.
But I guess, like you said, another three, four years, it's worth absolutely nothing.
Correct. And I mean, you're looking for a very specific individual to wear it.
If we can get that, close to that figure, I recommend doing it, I think. What's the cost for this equipment new right now?
You'd probably be looking about the same, about that $300 to $3,500. For the equipment that they're looking at, you're probably about the same. And, and when I say I struggle with it, we've had quite a few agencies in this county that have stepped up and helped the city of Painesville in the past at no cost to us. So when we look at the value, it's, you know, what is it? We've got an equipment from Wade Park, whether it's recorders or mic packs for squad cars. They don't back up mic packs for free. Last year, we saw Wilmer PD and Wade Park PD step up and sell us vehicles reasonable for our K-9. So I'm kind of torn as to where our value actually is here with this, with this equipment, so.
But we'll go back to this one more time. We still don't know who we're going to hire and, and/or if we're going to hire a brand-new police officer, or somebody comes in with five, six, seven years' experience that could be on SWAT.
There is nobody with experience.
What is the requirement?
That's in the process.
Like, how many years required of experience in order to even be eligible for SWAT team?
You're going to need a minimum of two years. And then you have to be accepted by Stearns County.
So basically, even the new guys that we hire, at that point, the vest or the, yeah, it'll be four years old, and it's got a five-year?
Most vests have a five-to-six-year shelf life.
Okay.
The two years, is that a county requirement?
Yes. When, when we hired Nate, his military experience gave him, they made an exception for him because of the extensive military experience that he had.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the used Painesville SWAT equipment to the Avon Police Department for preferably $1,000. But if you, if they offer $9,000, I guess, take it. See what you can do.
I think if you're going to sell it.
I, that's, can you be specific, Neil?
Between $800 and $1,000.
You want him to negotiate? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, I hate to lose it for $100 bucks.
I do.
Unless you say $800.
I, I'm, there hasn't been a second yet, and I'm hesitant to sell it, not knowing what's going to happen. We could have another Nate come in with experience, and two years' experience. I, you know, if anything, I'd like to have them make an offer. A how, you know, a solid offer before we say, you know, throw out any number.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I think that's where I stand as well. Then we know what they think is fair, so we can take into account the community value that Paul talked about. I don't know that we're going to have a use for it in the future, at least not during its lifespan. I think it makes sense to sell it. But I agree, I'd like to have an offer from them.
They have indicated that they can do $1,000, because that is their, that is their limit at which they can purchase it without having to go to council.
Can you get that in writing?
I can.
Okay.
Are you withdrawing the motion?
I guess if they're willing to go $1,000, I'll make my motion for $1,000.
I guess I'll second your motion, then.
Motion by, oops, Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the sale of the used Painesville SWAT equipment to the Avon Police Department for $1,000. Any other discussion?
I think that half of the value is decent, so no, I wouldn't, I don't want to sell for $1,000. I don't want everybody yelling about the budget every time we turn it on, and then all of a sudden, they want to give away a $3,000 item for $1,000 bucks.
But the alternative is the $3,000 item sits in storage somewhere for indefinitely.
$1,000 in the hand's better than sitting on the shelf like it does.
Any unanswered questions?
Yeah. I mean, even if we were to hire somebody else who may potentially fit in that uniform, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to support sending them to be a part of the SWAT team, because there were a lot, a lot of other costs involved with that training as well.
I agree. I think it's a narrow set of circumstances to find somebody who's going to fit in the equipment and then justify the cost, and whether or not we even want to have one of our officers be SWAT-trained and on that team. So, I think.
Which pieces of those equipment are basically sized?
The only thing that are not are the elbow pads and the knee pads and stuff. Pretty much everything else is sized.
Okay. The helmet?
Sized.
Doesn't have a, like a, like a military helmet with a liner? Is that what it is?
Yeah, I think. It's a tactical helmet, Kevlar helmet, so.
With a liner that fits different sizes?
I mean, there's, there's probably a, I'm going to guess that somebody might have the same head size, but we don't have tactical equipment here. So there really wouldn't be much of a need for us. My guys aren't going to be going into anything that's going to require that helmet.
Hey, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nate.
Minus nay, two. Three to two, the motion does carry. Back to Ron, you've had your break now. The wastewater treatment facility contract with Lake Henry?
Okay, we've been operating the city of Lake Henry wastewater facility for, I think, since the early '90s. I guess we hold the operators and the biosolider operators license up there. We do the inspections a couple times, sampling, et cetera. Do all the MPC reports for them. And Lake Henry's duties, they do all the day-to-day duties up there and compensate the city as we have listed here. And I guess the old rates, they were $45, $48, and $70 respectively. So.
I move to approve the wastewater treatment facility contract between the city of Painesville and city of Lake Henry.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to approve the wastewater treatment facility contract between the city of Painesville and the city of Lake Henry. Discussion.
Yep. I mean, my, my recommendation would be that we just update this, the language of this agreement a little bit. I mean, my recommendation would be that we just update this, the language of this agreement a little bit to at least refer to the fact that it's a joint powers agreement under Minnesota law and maybe address the liability issues a little bit more. I don't, I haven't, I didn't talk to Ron, I mean, I just got this agenda packet today, so I didn't talk to him. I don't really know if there's, you know, if our guys are up there doing stuff where there could be a workers' comp claim and who would be responsible, but I think there's, I mean, it's a nice, short agreement and there's some value in that, I guess, but I'm concerned that there might be issues that aren't really covered by this. Maybe I'm overreacting, but I just, I looked at it and I thought, boy, this is kinda bare bones in terms of an agreement. But maybe I'm, maybe Ron, maybe I'm worried about nothing, I just, that was my thought when I looked at it pretty...
Oh, we can take it off and reword it, that's fine.
I mean, I'd have to talk to you about it, get an understanding of exactly what we do, but if we're sending people back and forth to Lake Henry to do stuff up there, I think some of those issues need to be at least addressed.
Which we do, we send people up there several times a month, so.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, we can, we can table it. You can move to table.
Whatever, whatever is desired.
Or withdraw.
Yeah, well, I would withdraw and just move to table.
You withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't repeated it, so you can withdraw. Technically, all right. And you guys will take care of that then?
We will.
You will, I'm sure. Okay, purchase of a mower.
Okay, the park board has reviewed this and had recommended that we do purchase the John Deere 1575 four-wheel drive mower, 72-inch mower deck, and a 48-inch snow blower in the front of it. Obviously, the blower is for the downtown, this is the unit that we do utilize downtown. The specifications have to be such, the width, less than the 48 inches, and the height, I think, is like 74 to get under a bunch of the awnings there. We've had this unit since 2004, it's got roughly $3,500 on it, which for a mower, that is very extensive. We did talk about it several times in the past, of getting or trading up, but we always looked at waiting till we possibly do the downtown. But now that's been moved back another few years. I guess it's our feeling that we do need to upgrade at this time. The mower, where it would come out of, 30% that would be is utilized in the parks. The street, the snow would be 30%, the sewer, 20%, and the water, 10%. So that's where the budget would be allocated out of.
Out of your capital.
Correct.
Funds.
Solid capital improvement.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there money in the parks' capital improvement fund for this?
Yes, there is, there's like, I believe it's like $56,000 currently.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere 1575 four-wheel drive with mower and snow blower with trade-in in the amount of $31,500 from Midwest Machinery.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the purchase of a John Deere 1575 four-wheel drive with mower and snow blower with trade-in in the amount of $31,500 from Midwest Machinery. Discussion?
I'm assuming the 6175 is what we, I mean, we think we'll get at least, or more than... That's more than what we think we'd get by surplusing it?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None, that carried. And a note there that admin checked that ANC does not have the...
Correct.
The correct specs to offer.
And the state was higher, actually.
And the state was higher. Okay, all right, then on to item I, irrigation land lease agreements.
Okay, all of our land leases were up this year and we went through, visited with each of the farmers. Obviously, I think our biggest need here is obviously to prepare our treatment system for a year like 2019 where we basically broke all the rainfall records. And with keeping that in mind, I guess Pivot's two and three is 112 acres and it's a $252 per acre, three-year term. Pivot 17, which is our go-to pivot last year, is actually gonna be divided up this year to two different renters, 60 acres, and it's just a grass. And Pivot 20, that is a cropland lease at 170. And Pivot 14 has, that's the one where we are working with Steve Gutwell. The total acreage on that is obviously 160 acres, 80 of which is the city's. And the, Steve has agreed to putting 80 of that, or initially it's gonna be the city's 80, into a grass alfalfa mixture. And if in five years, if that dies out, he will rotate that crop, the grass hayland, over to his 80 and then he would crop our 80. And so that would always be in the rotation. And really, that's what we need, is that grass alfalfa mixture where we can apply some larger amounts of water. I guess the idea, there is the farmer on that crop, you're not putting any nutrients on it. So if we do irrigate, we're not running that down into the subsoils. Then the bottom two also, there's a grass and alfalfa mixture and grazing on that. So I guess the public works, we did review them all, have gone through them. Bill did go through, drafted them all, and I guess they did recommend them for approval.
I'll make the motion to approve the land irrigation lease agreements as presented.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Renkey to approve the landlord irrigation lease agreements as presented. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None, and that carried. And item G, we have the updated action sheet there. And Belinda will give us a verbal report. You've been so quiet tonight, so it's your...
I have, Ron's been busy. So this kinda came to light. Jennifer and I had a phone conference with Jessica from Northland Securities to make sure we both were capable of at least starting a conversation on TIP and tax abatement, because it's something that neither of us have really been very actively involved in in the past. And the one thing that she mentioned to us was that we really should have an application form process when somebody potentially comes to the city and wants to investigate whether they're eligible for TIP or tax abatement. And it was something the city did not have and should look at doing. In the meantime, we have found that there was indeed a tax abatement application form that neither of us were aware of. So this is kind of an update to the tax abatement application form we had and a new, for the TIP, application form it's put together. Jessica had sent us what she thought was a good generic one that she had from another city. Jennifer went through and typed it, put in Painesville and made it our own. The one thing that she thought was a very important segment of this was that when you have somebody apply for a TIP or a tax abatement, they should put money in escrow, because immediately you're going to start accruing attorney fees and some fees that if they back out or it doesn't work out, you wanna have somebody in escrow to cover those fees. The going rate for that, as she put it, was 10,000 for TIP and 5,000 for a tax abatement. And so we're just bringing this forward to be approved as an application process for TIP and tax abatements and to have the approval as part of this for escrow money from anyone interested in starting a TIP or a tax abatement. And if there's any money in that escrow that, you know, is left over, of course, it would go back to that consumer or we'd have to potentially ask for more if we run out of money.
We only had the one tax abatement...
We've only had one.
Project.
So have they filled out this application or is this something that goes into effect after? It's already in process?
This would go into effect potentially tonight if you were to approve it. There was a tax abatement application apparently done in 2014 when the one tax abatement we have was started. I have not seen that.
Jennifer, you said you found it, I think, correct?
I did find it, and that was the one tax abatement that was approved for the parents. And that one did not address the tips. And according to Jessica, this application could cover both. So it could come in for a TIP or a tax abatement. Same application could be used, forwarded to EDAP for their consideration, look at the viability of it, and then presented to, you know, the city attorney and then Jessica for her TIP consult to get those, that document, that process will maybe be addressed to the public, the public hearing and that type of thing.
And she said it's very, very helpful for her position.
So these are the questions that, for her to put together the whole big TIP document, are the things that she would want asked from the application. And I would assume that will be very helpful things for the city attorney as well, to have some of those things written in by the...
There's fees in here of 5,000 and 10,000. Do we think that's roughly what they cost?
That was Jessica's recommendation, she said that's very common for cities to have their escrow.
It also puts a little bit of teeth in it, she's, as we look into that. So we're not spending a lot of time as staff or city attorney or consultant on TIP that's not gonna have to comment. Actually, it puts a little teeth in it, yeah, we are serious about it, we're not just issuing to see if, you know, if we wanna spend time on it or not, ours would put a little bit of teeth in it.
Makes sense.
Well, I'll move to approve the request for financial assistance TIP or tax abatement application form with the inclusion of the escrow requirement.
I'll second that.
Motion by, excuse me, motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve the request for financial assistance TIP or tax abatement application form with the, how did you phrase that again? The escrow amounts, the 10,000 and 5,000 dollar escrow amounts?
Yep.
Is there any inclusion at all?
Yep.
I mean, it's written into this agreement, so...
Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None, carried. Off the other, the other item in the update is a gambling permit from Cronus Ducks Unlimited on page two. And they are applying for an LG220 application for exempt permit for the Ducks Unlimited conduct Bingo and Raffle, March 29th, 2020, and Queen Bee's Bar and Grill.
Is this similar to what the Lions have for Bingo to, for certificates of shields or? We don't know.
Aye.
It sounds kinda like a bingo. Anyhow, I will make the motion to approve Minnesota lawful gambling LG220 application for exempt permit for Cronus Ducks Unlimited.
I'll second that with the question of, is this something we can put on consent agenda in the future?
I think that'd be great. I guess there was some questions also if I might add about if, you know, this, being just came in today and our policies generally try to bend to have it, you know, a week ahead of time and accepting it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I know, that question was raised when I stopped in earlier today and it's the question of, do you put your foot down and upset a bunch of people? Or do you try and accommodate? And it is something that could potentially, I believe, be put on a consent agenda. If there's a question on it, it could be pulled and enacted separately.
And I guess as for the deadline, I know Policies is working on that revised ordinance to talk about that. And I don't know that it's clear right now, but in the future, then we would have a foot that could be put down, so.
So John, just to add to that, in the past, vehicles on the update, it never went on consent.
Right.
It was always put in new business, so, because we didn't have any time to look at it. So I would just need clarification on doing a lot of updates to done, if you still want them in new business.
Well, then...
Does there need to be a dollar amount under the raffle? I feel like I've seen that in the past, or has been amounts, but...
Yeah, I take their application at face value, because I'm not the state that actually issues the permit. They send us to the state and it's not completely filled out, they're gonna get it processed. Because I don't know the state of the players, we're saying that we conduct it within the same limits. The state's gonna say if they can actually do it.
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None, carried. In old business. Speaking of TIP, Mr. Spooner.
Yes. So we have, over the last month or so, have been working on putting together the development agreement and the TIP note and related documents that are in your packet. I know that there was some change to the description of the project that was made after this left my hands, based on a discussion that staff had with the contractor or the developer. But otherwise, this development agreement is the product of, well, mostly I put it together and then the attorney for the developer, Mr. Lenzner, had a few comments and things that were tweaked, but basically, I think we were, there wasn't anything too controversial. They didn't have any big objections to the agreement. And the only change to the description of the project, I think originally, we had described it as a three-story senior living apartment with so many units and the developer was holding out the possibility that he might ask for it to be four stories. So the description, I think, in materials now before you is that it could be up to four stories. The developer understands that he would have to get a variance for the height. Obviously, if he went four stories, he might have to get a variance at a three-story depending. But, so he's aware of that, but this is the agreement. I think the developers had a chance to look at it.
So, actually, they agreed before, he still says three. If you approve it to the fore, we'll add that language in, and that's what Tom wanted. I said, so I'm putting that in, I think we better get approval on that language first. Tom was invited to come, he has a flight issue, so he's not able to make it tonight, but would be available by form if there was any issues.
Okay.
But he suggested that would probably be good to use the language up to a four-story.
I apologize, I thought I made that change, oh.
So, I feel like when we talked about the height of buildings, part of it was that our fire trucks aren't necessarily capable of putting out a fire in a four-story building, so where...
So we actually, at the meeting that this was, looked at, we reached out to ANC Fire Chief to get clarification on that, and we have not received any, making writing back from him. He did indicate to us, incorrect, by Ron, Melinda, or Ron, that it's not so much the height that mutual aid would be called in on, but it is the magnitude of the fire. So even a two-story home, a single-family dwelling, they may call in mutual aid depending upon who is in charge at the date because of the magnitude of the fire. They may call in mutual aid on a downtown structure because of the magnitude of it spreading. So it's not necessarily the height that they would call in mutual aid that would bring a ladder truck, but the size of the fire, what type of fire it is, what is actually burning, things like that. There is some possibility that our ISO rating would go down, meaning property insurance is gonna go up, but...
For homeowners. For homeowners.
For homeowners, but we haven't got any, anything granted on it.
That would be part of the bill for the permit process, so. Determining whether, if you need a variance or...
Yes.
Whatever.
Whether you would grant the variance.
Yep.
Yeah. I would think that all those things would be factors you'd have to consider. You know, I mean, if it's a safety issue, you wouldn't wanna grant a variance. I would think that would be...
But that wouldn't affect this agreement. That would come later, when we deal with that.
This would not affect the actual variance, because you would be approving the TIP for up to a four-story structure.
For up to a structure, yep.
And the variance application, I did get it today. And they are looking at a 60-foot height instead of the 47 that we had originally talked to FAA about. So we're getting that, you know, reclarified in writing, so that can be presented with the variance. But it was submitted today with their payment of $500, that's gonna go to plan on Monday night for their initial report recommendation. So they have...
Already started the variance process?
They have, yep. They have applied the application, they paid it. I will be sending it to Bill tonight or tomorrow morning to get the report recommendation drafted or plan to consider that on Monday. or plan to consider that on Monday. They'll come at first need in March to set up a public hearing by council with that to be heard in mid-April. And the reason for the height is they're trying to build upwards instead of upwards so that they would have room for a future nursing home lane. It also pushes the structure from the west side of the property to the east, so instead of being right behind the Flange Drive properties, it would be pushed towards the park. So, that's their reason. The property itself sits in a, in a small dip in the landscape, so, you know, preliminary things show that FAA document had trouble with it.
Knowing that we still have to consider the variance request, I will move to approve the development agreement and loan agreement between the City of Painesville and Fortitude Senior Living of Painesville LLC.
Are you including the word about up to four?
Up to four.
I will include up to four.
I'll second that.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve the development agreement and loan agreement between the City of Painesville and Fortitude Senior Living of Painesville LLC with the change from three to up to four stories. Correct? Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, none, carried. All right. And item C is the twenty-twenty irrigation system expansion project on page one hundred and sixty.
Okay, actually, we have two items on that. First is the title commitment from the Stammer Farms. I guess I'm going to let Bill discuss that a little bit, and then also Chuck has the information for the project itself.
Hmm? Go ahead.
Yeah, as, as we talked about, as we went through the process of purchasing this property, you know, once, once it's secure, we'll have to go through a process to add in to our wastewater treatment facility as part of our permit, NPDES discharge permit. And really, the, there's a memo on the packet that lays out the steps. First, we'll complete a hydraulic analysis of the existing irrigation system to make sure we're getting the properly sized pipe over to the pivot and that the system operates and the city can run the number of pivots they want to at the same time. And I'll prepare the plans and specifications for the extension of our irrigation system over to the new land and connecting to the existing pivot. At the same time, we will be going through a permit modification process that will submit to the MPCA, the plans, specifications and permit modification documents get submitted. Typically, then you wait for many, many months during their review process, and once we get their approval and the permit's been modified, is when we go out and actually seek bids for the enforcement. So that timing's obviously going to be driven solely by the MPCA's review process, so the exact timing will have to be modified as we go through the process.
As far as the title commitment and so forth, did you want me to go into that or were you going to?
Well, let's act on this. Or is that going to have a bearing on the permit process?
No.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to authorize Bolton and Make Incorporated to complete the steps necessary for the NPDES permit modification.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to authorize Bolton and Make Inc. to complete the steps necessary for the NPDES permit modification. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, none, carried, non-clear.
Tom, in your packet, there's a title commitment. And it's pretty straightforward. There's just a couple of things. There's a power line easement out there that needs to be addressed. Just make sure that's not a problem, and a title insurance company would really want that to be specifically defined or removed. And, and then there's a mortgage from which this land needs to be released, at least as the time of closing. The invoice with the title insurance showed the bill for the exam, which basically gets us to the title commitment, what they would charge for closing and what they would charge for an owner's policy. I recognize it's a lot of money, but I, I sort of feel like, given the complexity and the, the dollars involved in the purchase, that it's a small extra. I mean, it's not small, but, but I think it's appropriate. Whether we use the abstract company to do the closing or not, I think, could be talked about down the line and a decision made on that. But I think my recommendation would be that, that we opt to, to bind the, the owner's insurance. And I would ask that the title exam fee be paid whenever bills are paid.
I will make the motion to purchase the title owner's insurance policy and pay the exam and settlement fee when they become due.
I'll second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to, what is that, pay the examination fee and the owner's policy is on here, is that correct?
The owner's policy charge won't be due till, till the time of closing, I think.
Time of closing, yeah.
But the, the exam fee is, that's been done, and that's what I would like, what I'm asking. And I think that was the motion, was to go ahead and pay that and to, to ask that they, you know, that they issue the policy.
Okay.
So that's.
Okay, unclear. Is everybody else clear? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, none, carried. And closing is what, end of May, is that what we had determined?
That it would be possibly late April.
Late April, okay.
It all depends on the bonding. I believe that'll be on one of our next meetings.
Okay. All right, then we, informational, we have the liquor store report, the library services coordinator that has been hired to replace Gretchen, and that is, is it, Carrie Bruber? How do you pronounce it?
I don't know.
And the Department of Health, the notice of the service connection fee increases, the Coalition, Highway Twenty-three Coalition Annual Meeting coming up, and ready going to that. The Bus Central Sanitation Reports and the Police Department Reports for the month. And then note that we are going into closed session for tiny, tiny. For a tiny bit, no. Attorney-client communication regarding threatened litigation. And we will ask our attorney, of course, and our acting administrator, interim administrator and assisted administrator, and that should be it.
I'm going to grab the phone and see if we can get a phone on speakerphone. I have to try to get Susan.
It's not going to work for her, so we don't.
Oh, okay.